Go ahead and get started. There's nothing on the agenda for public hearing or all items of discussion. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. What we are here to talk about is the meeting times and dates for 2019. The recommendation from the Chief Clerk that I generally like would be keep the Commissioner meetings on the second and the fourth Wednesday of the year or the month. The Wednesday, excuse me, the work sessions would then be on Monday at the same time. The question is, do we want to keep doing them every week or do we want to cancel the ones that are not immediately preceding the Commissioner's meeting?
I think we keep them.
I'd rather keep them, I guess, than not have to bother advertising. If we cancel a few, we cancel a few.
Because more, it just feels like more often than, I mean, like right now, we've had a couple of weeks where it's been slow at different times, but...
That's just because we're working on the budget.
Yeah, exactly.
And then Salary Board moves to directly after the Commissioner's meeting, so it's not...
Yeah, that sounds better.
And that way, if we get it, get one, everyone will be there already.
Yeah.
Knock it out, and you can take, because one, it seems like when we have them, they're like an hour long.
Yeah.
Whereas before, sometimes they were five minutes and a waste of time, which is why we moved them. But yeah, when we have them now, it's usually a big fight, so...
Yeah.
So let's have them directly after the Commissioner's meeting. I like that. Prison Board, 1:30 on Tuesday of each month, on the last Tuesday of each month. Is that working for us?
Wait, what was that?
The Prison Board meetings.
Yeah, I guess. It's tough for me because it seems like it always falls on the TAC meeting, or there's some meeting and I end up missing it. But whatever.
Well, it seems like we've been having trouble with form. Part of that may be because we lack anything interesting to discuss at them.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think...
They seem like a waste, but...
Well, it's, yeah. It's tough because we've taken a more active role in management of the jail, and I think that the folks on the board probably don't feel like they're, they have a purpose and...
That could be. Anyway. Wait a minute, alright. Can't think of a more convenient time.
No, it's more...
No, and I think the 1:30 was chosen by those that are in the courts.
Yeah.
That that was the best time for them.
I think Rob Green was very, he felt like that was the best time. I think, I think same with the PD.
Mm-hmm.
I think Parisini felt like that was a good time. So that's a good time, then.
Okay. So basically, keep everything the same except Salary Board will be immediately, advertised as immediately after the Commissioner's meeting.
Yep.
And that way, we can decide the beginning of the Commissioner's meeting, whether or not we're having it or not. The only other thing that's missing, I think, would be should we put Retirement Board on here as well? Meeting Retirement Board meeting could be directly after the Commissioner's meeting, and that way...
Well, the only thing is that we don't, the Retirement Board doesn't meet like every month or every quarter. They...
We should meet every quarter, so why don't we go ahead and put it on one of the quarter meetings? If we cancel it, we cancel it. But the point of doing this now, I think about it now, I believe, is getting it all out of the advertisements we pay for at once.
Mm-hmm.
We cancel meetings, we can't...
Totally agree.
So after Salary Board?
Yeah, after Salary Board, once every quarter, so just pick whatever date you want.
Do you, do you wanna take the time to schedule town halls now? Just throw that in there too? Do the same schedule?
Summertime might be hit last year.
Yeah, do the same schedule, like date wise even, like, I mean, not exactly a date, but like the same range, you know? And then have Pam figure out what dates work. Does that, does that seem, does that seem like too much to do now, or... Because it'd be nice to just, if we're gonna do everything, it'd be nice to put it all on one thing. The only challenge you're gonna have is you're gonna call everybody up and say, can we have the space?
And they're not gonna know until...
Yeah. Well, they might let you, some of them might not. Most of them should just like, should just mark you down on the calendar, right?
Minimum, you could put down that day. Oh, you do have to advertise the address. I was gonna say, you could just say it's gonna be in Sheffield on such and such date, and it can't be the Lions Club, and we'll do it.
Yeah, why don't we just, that seems like too much work. Just do, we'll add it as a separate thing at the beginning of next year. Because I don't want that whole, because when are you gonna do, you have to do the advertisement in January, right?
December.
Okay, so you do it in December. So you'd have to figure out those dates. I mean, why don't we just leave it up to Pam to figure out?
I was gonna say, let me, let me work on that.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to find, you know, different locations.
Yeah, that would be nice to kind of move around a little bit, because there are more, there are other locations we could do in the Southwest.
Mm-hmm.
I thought the Lions did, was nice in Sheffield, and then Glade wasn't bad. I think that we should do something in the city, though, like in the city, because I just don't...
This year, why don't we move that Sheffield one to Claremont?
Okay, yeah.
Move the Columbus one to Spring Creek.
Okay.
Or would you do it in Tete?
We could find places in Tete, yeah.
Oh, we had one in Grand Valley, so we'll do the, this one is here in Tete.
Yeah.
Could we do one in Sugar Grove?
Where were we in the Northern End?
No, we did Columbus, we did Elk.
Oh, that's right, we were up in, yeah, so we'll find something in Russell, like in Pine Grove.
Yeah, in Russell, one in the City, one in...
And one in the City, yeah.
I'll do my best to get Pine Grove, that's why we were in Elk.
We, well, they won't do it, they'll Sugar Grove.
Yeah.
Four, five, six, yeah, totally.
Yeah, we're doing in...
Oh, and then one in Guggenheim.
Yeah, but then you can move it to Borkenshaw. Well, we did that one in the municipal building.
It'll be fine in the municipal building, yeah.
Yeah, you could do it there, you could do it at the Borkenshaw, and still you could do it in the fire department, whatever.
Yeah, Yonkersville and Warren are the two largest municipalities in the...
Okay, let me get ahold of, get ahold of them, and we'll work on the 2019 schedule so that we can get them all advertised.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that would be Get Limestone, Watson, Southwest, Tete, they would all go to Tete. Columbus, Spring Creek, Eldred, or Seal, Freehold, we'll either go to Sugar Grove or Spring Creek.
Yeah, that'll work.
Everything around Hunsell, yeah. Everything in the Northern Tier, cover, city cover, Southwest, yeah. So yeah, if you can pull that together, I guess, we're gonna have a...
Should we try to get the budget hearing scheduled too? Because we just scheduled them, basically, and instead of everybody needing to be there, didn't we? Because that's what they do, that's what they basically do in, in Angell.
You mean, when they put it out for public review?
No, like, with the schedule, the budget hearings, like the, like, they put it, they put that schedule out, I think, at the same time they put their meeting schedule out. Like, and they do the, whatever, like, the same timeframe, like, in September.
I don't know that Eric would be ready to tackle that.
I'm just, just making the dates, I'm not saying who knows when, who goes where.
Yeah.
We're just doing, like, you know, September 10th or whatever.
Budget meeting.
All morning, September 11th, all morning, whatever. Maybe if we add more in the future, tie it onto a work session, that's fine, so...
Yeah, I think it should be, like, just the same timeframe, like, whatever it was, what was it, the second week or through, what was it, the second through September or something?
Just do the same thing we did this year, the order of all.
Okay.
Special meetings, we can't anticipate obviously.
No, I'll be doing one here, short advertising for December, I believe it is the 19th, which is the evening meeting.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be here to set the salaries of the elected officials, so that'll be done.
Actually, I gotta get my bag of corn.
I have so many files on this.
That's a joke.
Yeah, the only different one that'll be on there, the list, is for pro bonitari for a two-year term.
Yeah.
You know, which, those rights have already been set, because we have to elect somebody for the next two years. So we have to set that salary, so that whoever's going to run knows what, which, that's already been set.
Right, so I'm pretty sure I'd just stick with what we already agreed to, but...
Yeah, but that'll be on the list.
But I see the pro bonitari. So is that the Commissioners?
Yeah.
Coroner, no.
Not coroner?
Sheriff.
They'll be all the ones that are running, yeah, so Register, Recorder...
Register, Recorder.
Auditors.
All-in Treasury. Antibiotics.
And numbers.
Yeah, we've set a quote of view.
So hopefully, we have a, as large a turnout for next year as we did this year in the election.
I doubt that.
That's all the, the new stuff.
Any public comment? And/or Director comments?
I'll be in Pittsburgh next Monday for a stress test, so I will not be here.
Stress test?
Stress test, you guys are stressing me out.
This job is a stress test.
Uh, my doctor wants to make sure that's not wrong on my heart.
Oh, well, we know there's not a...
I don't have one.
They're gonna X-ray and find out if two sides are too small, right?
Christmas has come, Bob.
Uh, project updates, any to raise? Where are we at on the sidewalk? That's a go, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The rest of it would get rolled into ABM if we can?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a...
I've gotta give ABM a call about... They're coming tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, I gotta, I gotta call them, because I keep, I keep meaning to call them back. Because, yeah, I think that, I think the way that we're looking at it is, is everything is gonna get rolled into ABM next year, all the capital and stuff.
Including the elevator?
I think, I think it's very possible, yeah.
Because that'll be saving us on maintenance costs to just overhaul it, so, yes.
They, they've done a good job so far, so I'm more than happy to hand over that to them, and the goal is to try to get it to a place where it's as revenue neutral as possible, so... And so that actually tax dollars, you know, don't get, like, there's no added capital cost to the county.
Alright.
I, we should have a conversation about throwing the locking mechanisms into that, because that hasn't been done yet.
There, yeah, definitely. Are you around tomorrow, right after the next meeting?
Yeah.
Because that's when I'm meeting them. I'm not gonna be able to make the meeting with Ruby Wild, so...
I'll, I'll go.
I, I've heard the pitch before, I'm sympathetic. I don't think the county is gonna chip in on it, but maybe not.
Well, I think it's, the thing that's tough now is that you've got several book programs running, and they need to kind of collaborate. Because the Jefferson and Freeze house, and what they're doing, and they're getting grant funds from the Dolly Parton Foundation.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so they should figure out where to work together.
Yeah, she's got a good children's book foundation.
Yeah, which I think is really neat. I didn't, she didn't really like Dolly Parton, I'm like, what? I think nine to five, Dolly Parton?
Uh, okay, public. Public meeting, on the agenda, we have early the EID, which would be a quick one, briefly after about the EID. Depository tax bids, easy IGT.
There are, yeah, there are no proclamations this time. I think we're all done to the beginning of the year.
Shouldn't we have, like, a Christmas proclamation? Oh, wait, no, that's, is that, is that too religious?
You know, well, depends how it's worded.
But Christmas is my favorite.
We've never had a Christmas proclamation.
Or, it'd be easier to, we could definitely do a Thanksgiving proclamation. Would you like to do that?
That sounds nice, too. I'm gonna write that up. I like proclamations, I like proclaiming things.
Well, it's very easy to do a Thanksgiving proclamation, because we can basically, if anyone were to challenge it, say, huh.
Yeah, that's kind of non-denominational, right?
Uh, okay, Tan. MBJ Office, we gotta decide what we wanna do there.
We're, we're gonna stick with, I mean, I don't, like, it's too much work in a month to try to move them out of there.
Maybe explore for just a few months, then move them in the spring. I mean, we're already paying for the space at the 911 Center.
I know.
It's actually decently well set up for such a thing.
How much space, though, is there really on that first floor?
Quite a bit, particularly given that the current tenant is interested in moving into the co-working space.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then yeah. I mean, I, I think there's gotta be, like, an exit clause if we're gonna...
So just make sure there's, like, a 90-day exit clause in it or something, and then, facet.
Yeah, because then that would be, we'd be saving six to nine, that's six to eight thousand, seven thousand dollars a year.
Uh, yeah, it's like $600 a month, so...
Yeah.
And then Electric, Great Easy Marketing Task Force, how long are you gonna take? Because we have to be out of there by one, so we should probably just move the meeting to here, if you're gonna take more than like 20 minutes.
More than 20 minutes? What if I'd taken less than 20 minutes?
That would be good.
20 minutes, what are you talking about?
No, there, there is a couple of other things. There's a proclamation to reauthorize the task force committee.
Yeah, I know.
That'll be a big piece of cake.
And...
So, all this stuff's gonna take, like, 10 minutes?
You hope. The IGT could be more than...
For what?
Impossible.
It's, yeah, it's possible if somebody will vote against it, but that's about it.
And...
Then we'll have to have that whole conversation again.
Two, four, six, eight, 10. And it's probably, seriously, though, how long are you gonna take from the presentation for Chuck?
I'd say, I'd, if we've gotten to one, if we can get through this stuff in 15 minutes, then at least like 30, or 30 or so.
And then the appointee.
Actually, you're probably in better shape, because Chuck's gonna do most of the presenting, so she, she's better with time management than I am.
Alright, so let's just limit to 30 minutes, then.
Okay.
And if the Q and A has to get cut off at the end, then it has to get cut off.
I'm like Bob Hope, I only do worse.
A different type of guy.
This is a joke from the morning that I'm... Well, get somebody good, get Bob Hope.
Well, my bird, look at it.
Bob doesn't do these actions.
Yeah, I did get the, the letters done and the names for the Human Services Task Force, too.
Yeah, that'll be...
So that'll be, that's added on there, so that'll be quick, too.
Okay. Department headies or updates, that just remind me.
The only thing that I have is that Wednesday evening will be the last Veterans Council meeting for the year.
Oh.
And we moved our times, we now meet at 6:00 instead of 7:00.
Okay.
That way, people can get home at a, still a decent time.
Yeah. You going to bed earlier, Ed?
I do go to bed earlier. The only ride gets here, earlier I go.
There you go, there you go.
And that's this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
I haven't been to one. I was, I was to one this year, I think.
No, not this year.
I was still there this year.
Not this year.
Yeah, I like March. Pretty sure.
I don't think, but I'll look back through our notes.
I, I've been there once this year, there was still snow on the ground.
I think it was last year.
Alright, you know what? I document every 15 minutes of my life.
I was gonna go back and look. I'm gonna prove you wrong, okay?
Yeah, I showed you, Ed.
Oh, November 8th, 2014.
You're right, you're calling it out.
Anyway, Commissioner's schedule.
Is very busy.
We know where you were in the February.
Okay, uh, so, one Thursday morning, I am going to the United Fund Board meeting, and then immediately going to Harrisburg with the PPS crowd to look over the Motorola radio stuff. That'll be all Thursday afternoon, all day Friday.
So, do we have a timeframe on the rollout for that?
It's gotten pushed back for various reasons, so...
Why have you pushed back to when?
Spring.
Okay, because we should really coordinate with the Governing Office and others, and...
Oh, absolutely. There will be a big...
Bring them up and have a big brouhaha, because this is gonna be a big deal.
It is a big deal, yeah. So this is purely technical stuff that we'll be going over Thursday and Friday, like, how we want things programmed, who can adopt to who, that sort of thing.
Okay.
More and stuff, even for me, but...
Jeez.
Thanks.
Yeah, I wanna watch my kids watch YouTube.
Saturday, Natural Gas Task Force, Sunday, C cap.
So, Pam, did you register the hotel rooms down there for everybody?
Ben did not want one, you have one, and Commissioner Morrison.
Okay, do I have one, like, in the Hershey Hotel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I was just thinking about that, because the, that river fence is just far enough away that I don't, that becomes kind of a hall. So, yeah, alright, good. That's the one, the Fall Convention is the one that I just wanna where I like to stay in, actually.
I may crash with you Sunday night if you're not bringing your wife.
No, it's just me, that's fine.
Because there's that graduate, so I'm graduating from the CE, from the C cap Academy, so paid my, and to no cost of the county. I paid my own registration and everything, and completed all the credit hours, so my graduation is Sunday evening, and then there's that 7:00 AM breakfast on Monday, and I'm not sure I wanna drive. An hour to my cousin's place, and then back, like, six hours later, but, yuck. So if you don't care, I'd like to crash you down.
Okay.
Alright, anyway, and then there's C cap Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, until early afternoon, and then we'll come back, correct?
So Monday's work session is canceled.
Right.
Because you're there, I won't miss it.
No, you will not miss it.
And then we work Wednesday.
And then we're all Thursday, Friday.
Alright.
And then, so, we're still on track to present the budget December 3rd.
Right.
Just...
No, wait.
Does it give the 20 days?
Twenty, well, it's 20, technically, yeah, like 21, so from my estimation, we would do the actual vote on the 26th.
Right.
Which is the last meeting of the year.
Right.
But if we put it out December 3rd, then that'll be, and so far, everything looks good, so, we should be fine for December 3rd, I think.
Indeed. And don't forget, on the 21st in the afternoon, we have that entrepreneurship for anything that I'd like to roll out.
December 21st?
No, November 21st. That is, that's it, right? That's the, um, ice house training.
I have it on my calendar, I remember looking at it and being concerned.
Oh, wait, this is 27, this is 27.
20, yeah.
Okay, sorry, never mind, not the 21st.
But you also have the 27 in a vault. Is that the 27?
No, oh, 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 that's the 21st, that's why I had that night, that day stuck in my head. Okay, so we're doing an interval planning meeting, we had the first one the other day. Went well, got a lot of things hammered out in terms of organization that we'd run it, what kind of amenities we need to provide and all of that. I've written all that up in a report that I'm gonna circulate to folks that I am inviting to the meeting on the 21st. And if you or Stephanie could come to take notes at that meeting, that'd be wonderful. And then, that's from 10 till whenever, we're gonna hash out the rest of the remaining details, get a proposal together, and then I'll take that back to the WCCDI Board and make the recommendations on how the thing operates. That's the 21st, I'm sorry, I got the two confused.
And that would...
Do you wanna sit at that? Yeah, if you wanna be there, that's fine. 10? Yes, at the ATC Building.
On the 21st?
Yes, at 10.
Okay.
And then it'll probably be me.
So the meeting's at PNC on the 21st at 10 o'clock?
At Future Inevol offices, yes.
Is it I N N?
I N N O D A U L T, like Innovation Vault.
Make sure that's on my calendar. Uh, did we, did we chat about the, the car wash bit?
Not in public meeting.
Okay.
I have not heard anything directly from you, I got an email from Bill, and I was like, what is this?
Yeah, so that's a good thing to discuss, since we're here.
Good.
Because I keep, I know there's a couple of things that these, and I'm running too fast. So, I met with Bill Clark from Bolinger to talk about his detailing business, or, what's that detailing, the car wash business with the consumers for Bolinger. We had that brief, I can't remember if you were there or not, we were at the Governing Board, and for a brief moment, he brought up this, this car washing business that basically, you know, works with municipalities and different organizations to wash their fleet vehicles and stuff like that. It's not a detailing business, just because I think that there's, that's a little bit too involved for what they wanna do. And he was talking about having a difficulty finding space in order to have it, have the thing, especially during the winter, they, the space that they're using is an outdoor, and I can't remember what was. So, Commissioner Morrison was there, I was there, and, and we said at the time, you know, why don't you have a conversation with Matt about it? And I thought that it would be, he'd, he'd talk with Matt, and then we'd all kind of go look at it and stuff, well, they went out and looked at the warehouse, because that was what we pitched.
Right. And to be clear, for the sake of the paper, the reason that that's an interesting facility is because the Transit Authority used to...
Wash the buses there. So, they went out and looked at it, Dr. Clark loved the space, and, and then sent like an email out saying, okay, we need to do this, 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 and this, and this.
Right, and I was like, whoa.
Wait, 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 wait. So, and, and the thing is, is I think his email was a little bit involved, more involved than what they're actually doing. So, like, even I was kind of like, whoa, we need to have a conversation about it. So, basically, like, one day a month, or maybe a couple days a month, they wanna use the space out there to have this fleet car washing business. And it would be that, that front bay that, that's currently empty. And, and the issue that I had with it, was talking with him, was about the recycling business and everything, and that, the...
So the future, yeah.
So, I don't think that it should interfere with that at all, and in fact, it could potentially complement, because I also talked with him about partnering with Bolinger to be a part of the recycling.
Front bay.
Like, like, the building's an L shape, and that, that, the part of the L that sticks out, where there's that stretch where there's the, the...
Oh, where the driving vehicles used to be.
Where they used to be.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so they're just gonna pull the vehicles in there, shut the, the thing, wash them, then pull them out.
Right.
And the only issue with it, I believe, is to talk to Matt about the heating system, just to make sure that it's functioning properly, and...
It does work on that part, yes.
Yeah.
Your problem with that part of the building is that the roof leaks, like I said.
Yeah, well, they're washing cars, so. It'll just add to a little bit of, no, um, so, yeah, so, it'll be an opportunity for them to, again, integrate their workers and, and have a, a, you know, another opportunity for them to draw income for their workers.
So does the county get rent, or do we get to wash, do they wash our vehicles for free, or what's the benefit to the county, besides...
Well, this is, that's something that we can discuss, the way that I, I look at it is, is that they're, you know, they're, they're providing a service to persons with disabilities. Like, I, I go back and forth between just letting them have the space, as long as their impact on it's minimal, and we could have...
Pay utilities?
We could have a conversation about that, I don't know, you know, we, we need to, we could talk to Eric about coming up with a number. I didn't, I didn't pitch that to Bill at all, I just was happy to let him use the space. I think that the, the only issue, I think that we should have a conversation about maybe them putting something in the pot for utilities just because the, the heat utilization in the building's gonna increase when they're there. It's just, they're gonna be there, like I said, one day, two days a month, like, it's kind of like, you know, you know, I don't.
Well, plan for a lot more. Uh, I mean, the liability insurance is gonna need to be hammered out.
Well, I think that, I think that's the, that's a good point, that's the other thing that I wanted to talk to you about was having the solicitor draw up an agreement with them so that we waive, you know, there's just like a liability waiver where they're, you know, responsible for themselves and if they injure themselves, it's their, you know.
They damage our property, they fix it.
Yeah.
I would say they pay the utilities and wash a certain number of our vehicles for free. And then, and then I'm good with it.
Might even, yeah, I think even the, the vehicle washing would make up, would probably make up the difference.
Yeah, the only thing is we have the inmates that we could use for that, so.
They, they do the sheriff's vehicles.
They wash the sheriff's vehicles, but our regular vehicles like Macoson takes them out and they get washed, right?
No, I think they wash ours if, if Matt makes the arrangements, yes.
But it'd be nice to do a little more regular cleaning, so.
Okay, well, then, then we'll, we'll, I'll talk with Eric about figuring out a way.
Especially in the wintertime, you get a lot of mud and stuff you drag into the car and so.
Yep.
Maybe enterprise sponsors.
There you go. Yeah, so.
All right, uh, so, yeah, South, this solicitor wraps something up, I'd say.
Okay, great.
Good. Or Pam, you wanna do that? All right, anything else? General discussion? Uh, we have any cause for, oh, you should get the DA van, the DAD vans in there too. To wash.
Yeah, I'm sure they would not turn that down.
Well, and they're, they're right next to them, I, I have a sneaking suspicion that they're already tied in with them somehow, but.
Yeah, that's not right. All right, uh, no cost executive sessions, correct? Okay, anything else? Will we go to the order?
I got other stuff, but I'll, I guess I'll wait until next week.
Anything else?
The weekend.
It's only till thirty, you wanted to talk more.
No, I, I just, I have stuff that I need to be more prepared to discuss than what I am, I guess is what I mean. I, I'm so focused on getting this task force report out and then the redevelopment task force report out and, and a few other things that I, there's a couple of things that we really need to talk about, like single point of entry and some other things.
Budget related things?
Yeah.
We can talk about that with the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, cause.
It does remind me, we only have like one work session between now and budget release, correct?
Well, that, that is, it is the budget releases, the next work session, cause next week's.
There's a twin cancel, then, then there's the third.
Oh, yeah, okay, no, you're right. Okay, so, yeah, we have one.
Is there any major on that work session anymore?
Probably not, we.
We'll probably need to talk about it.
At the Ice House?
Um, no, that's the next day.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm at the TAC meeting.
On the twenty-sixth?
On a Monday?
Twenty-seventh.
Oh, okay.
No, uh, yeah, so we should probably line up any, like, budget discussions aside from the release of the budget at that work session on the twenty-sixth.
Right, if we have to do any women in the union, it should be at that meeting.
Yep.
Bring your battle armor.
Oh, man.
Well, should we get back to it?
Back to what?
Budget. Is that now you're done?
Yes.
Meeting is done.